It's time.
All righty. We'll call to order a roll call, please.
Commissioner DeBries?
Here.
Sheriff Fred Brooksen?
Here.
Commissioner Goss?
Here.
Commissioner Hunsicker is not here yet. Commissioner Keith?
Here.
Commissioner McCoy?
Here.
Vice Chair Shores?
Here.
And we've got a forum.
All right, everybody, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All righty, we have approval of the minutes, the regular meeting minutes of July 10th, 2018.
What a motion to approve?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second. Is there any further discussion?
He wasn't here.
Then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All righty. Now we're on to number two, consideration of public comments. Those wishing to address the Planning and Zoning Commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time pursuant to ARS 38-431. Do we have any comments from the general public? I see none. All righty, thank you. All right, number three, old business. Sylvia, would you please?
Good evening. Do you want to read in this one, or? Oh, okay, gotcha. So, we have a text amendment tonight for allowance of patio covers within the front and rear setback. So, the city has initiated a request for this text amendment to the zoning ordinance of the city of Kingman to allow patio covers to be constructed within the front and rear setbacks. And here's a little example of, say, a patio cover in the front and a patio cover in the rear. We kind of went over this a couple times last week, so it's very summarized in this PowerPoint. In residential zoning districts, the city of Kingman zoning ordinance does not allow patio covers to be built within the setbacks. Several property owners wanted to have a patio cover constructed in the front and/or rear yard areas of the home to provide additional shade and could not. At the last meeting, the commission voted to move forward with the text amendment. So, I, as staff, added a definition of patio cover to Section 2.000 of the zoning ordinance for further clarification. The term patio cover will include shade structures such as awning and porch covers. And we decided to do this because so many different places would call one an awning and one a porch. So, we put it all under patio cover. So, a patio cover will include porch covers and awnings, is an unenclosed shade structure that is attached to a building with posts or columns to support the outer portion. The roof of a patio cover may be partially open or solid. The proposed language, I added language to Section 26.210 of the zoning ordinance to allow patio covers in certain portions of the front and rear setbacks. Patio covers constructed with non-combustible materials may extend into a front yard for a distance not to exceed three feet as measured from the support posts or columns. Patio covers may extend into the rear for a distance not to exceed five feet as measured from the support post or columns, except when a property abuts a recreational open-space zoning district such as a golf course. In that instance, the patio cover shall be built no closer than four feet from the rear of the property line. In all instances, the patio cover overhang shall not be closer than two and one-half feet to any property line. I did try to draw up a little example of how the proposal would work. So, if we had a 20-foot front setback, the awning could go within three feet of the front. For a standard 15-foot setback, it could go up to five feet to the rear. And then in cases where there's a golf course, like open space at the rear of the property, they could actually go up to four feet, but the awning overhang could go no closer than two and a half. Staff recommends amending Section 2.0 and 26.210 of the zoning ordinance to allow patio covers to be constructed within the front and rear setbacks. And if you have questions for me, I'm here.
Anybody have any questions for Sylvia?
I do not.
Righty, thank you, Sylvia.
You're welcome. I'm just going to hang tight because I have a lap next to items, so.
I'm going to open this up to the public. Is there any comments from the public on this amendment? Yeah, I see none. Thank you. Open it up for discussion amongst those members here.
We already talked about it. I think it looked good to me.
I think it sounds good, the way it was written. I mean, it matches other ordinances that I've looked at and checked, and I think this one is good. I would be to make a motion to approve this.
Are we, you need, we need to make a motion on this tonight, Sylvia, or?
Can we?
Or I should say, can a motion be made on this?
Yes, this would be recommending the text amendment to move forward to council tonight. So, yes, please do take a vote on that.
All righty.
All right, then I would like to make a motion to approve this.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion.
The chair.
I have a motion been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? A roll call vote?
Commissioner DeBries?
Approve.
Hey, Sheriff Fred Brooksen?
Approve.
Commissioner Goss?
Approve.
Commissioner Hunsicker is approving, and Commissioner?
Approve.
Commissioner McCoy?
Approve.
Vice Chair Shores is approved too, so we have a, the motion carries.
Thank you, Sylvia.
You're welcome, thank you.
Just so everybody knows, there's, it looks like there's a little bit of confusion up here. There's been a little bit of snafu with our, I guess you could say, our technology. So, I just want everybody to be aware that we're just going off, I guess doing it the old way, off our paper, and some of it's not there too. So, just wanted to give a little explanation out there of what's happening. So, we have now old business, item B, discussion regarding cargo containers.
Okay, so here again, I try to take into consideration what we have discussed in the past and present you with some options for our discussion related to cargo containers. Over the past six months, the Planning and Zoning Commission discussed whether cargo containers should be allowed in any residential zoning districts for storage purposes only, only, yeah. Over the last month, staff came up with three options to present to the commission, which considered comments from both the commission and the public. Some options I thought about because I was considering some of the larger lots or horse privileges lots. Maybe option one is allow cargo containers for storage only in the rural residential zoning districts, which do have the horse privileges typically one acre or greater and on the outskirts of town. Option two, allow cargo containers for storage in all R-R rural residential and R-140 zoning districts in areas annexed prior to 1989. And with that, that excludes some of the newer subdivisions. And these areas prior to 1989 have horse privileges, larger lots, and kind of on the outskirts of town as well. Option three, do not change the current allowance that cargo containers can only be used as building materials in any residential zoning district. I did prepare a map to try to show where the rural residential is, and it is mostly on the outskirts of town. This is beige area. So, that's option one. Option two, I'm showing rural residential and R-140 in areas annexed prior to 1989. And so, that would be your blue and beige on this map. And then option three is keeping the existing allowance, which allows cargo containers to be used in any zoning district as building material, but they must meet the building code and occurrence criteria. Then nothing would change there with option three, just keep current allowances. I did make a list of suggested requirements if we take option one or two. And so, storage containers must be located to the rear or the side of the principal building so that the view is minimized from public view and neighboring properties behind a six-foot site obscuring fence such as a block wall or solid wood fence. Placement of storage containers must meet the setbacks for accessory structures, can be placed up to four feet to the rear and must meet side setbacks. If the rear abuts a public street, placement of a storage container must meet the setbacks of a primary residence. The exterior of a storage container must match the primary structure, possibly paint or, I think we were going more with stucco siding and materials recommended by the commission. This is a continuation. Landscaping such as trees or hedges should be used in combination with the exterior appearance criteria mentioned above to help screen the storage containers from abutting property lines and rights of ways. Maximum size of the storage container allowed should be 320 square feet, which is an eight-by-40. More than one container is allowed on the lot if two of them equal basically 320 square feet. Storage containers can't be stacked. A permit is required prior to placement so that we can verify the setbacks and appearance criteria. And cargo containers used for storage only must be included in the calculation of the lot coverage. So, tonight, the Planning and Zoning Commission is asked to review this memorandum. You may make a motion to, for staff to draft a text amendment with either options one, two, or three, or take no further action at this time, or ask staff to bring back more research. And even with options one or two, you can maybe vote to approve one of them with striking something you didn't like in my outline of recommended conditions that go with that. And I'm here for questions.
Either way, Sylvia, if we decide to move forward with one of them and go with the text amendment, you would bring that back at the next meeting. Is that correct?
Correct.
Side, yes, we agree with that, much like we just did on the overhangs, and so there'd be one more chance for public comment?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other question?
Yeah, I have one, if you don't mind. So, I want a clarification, I guess, as the proposal is, they have to have a block wall or a wood fence erected in front of one of these containers, or how exactly is that proposed?
Like, if it was a regular, single-family residence, it would be on the lot line, like, just so that it's not an open rail fence, basically.
So, you're talking about surrounding the property?
Right. It doesn't have to enclose the cargo container.
And then you also propose to landscape around it in addition to the fence?
It's a recommendation.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Other question, Sylvia? Sylvia?
You're welcome.
I'm going to open this up to the general public if anybody has any comments.
I got a question.
Please come up, state your name.
Sylvia, oh, sorry. I'm sorry, we had to print these out. We don't have our computers. Where is the options at on this? Because I.
It's close to page 257.
257.
If you go right past 257.
Okay, thank you.
There's no page numbers after 257.
Thank you. Thank you, Sylvia.
The options are up on the screen.
Oh, okay.
Excuse me, state your names.
Gordon Klein. I'll be talking to you guys later about zoning on the South Side. I've got a whole one-acre place. It's been put into three different lots. How come you can't put that on RMH6 as opposed to just R rural residential or R-140? How come mobile homes wouldn't be allowed to do that? I've got two mobile homes on that property. It's a very nice property. How come you're telling me I can't do that? That's my question. Or possibly not telling.
That would be up to planning. You'd have to come down and ask, talk with planning and zoning on that one. I can't answer that one.
Okay, I mean, it's not open to residential. It's only, it's not open to mobile homes. It's only open to residential at this point. Just thought I'd bring that up.
Well, it's only, it's only a discussion at this point.
Okay.
On areas as was read off. So, you know, as one of them describes 1989 and later, certain lots could be, we could open it up, we could open it up to the whole city. We can only open it up to.
That's why I'm asking the question, because it is, it's not up there for anybody that's a mobile home. I got, I got two really nice mobiles up there. The place is immaculate. So, you know, that's why I'm asking.
No, I think to add to what Gary's alluding to, this has been, I don't know, probably over a year, we've had some discussion on the subject. And what we're trying to potentially arrive at is starting slowly on allowing them to make sure that we don't make a bad decision on the subject and that we're careful and cautious in how it potentially gets rolled out if we move forward and everything goes all the way through. And then after we have a little bit of experience under our belt with it, certainly we could take a look at other opportunities that may or may not be available. But the idea was to be cautious. If, it's just potentially cautious.
You got, you got double wides, you got triple wides that are in great shape, that are better than homes, that shut out in this particular, the way you guys are saying. So, I just thought I'd bring that up.
Understand.
Thank you. Any further comments? Thank you. All righty. I'm going to start off, and I know with Terry and numerous others up here along with me, we've been hashing this for, seems like, two and a half years, from one end of the city to the other. And I've met with Sylvia from the Planning and Zoning Department for an hour and a half on end, researched online, talked with neighbors, soul-searching. And I'm just going to have, in my opinion, and it's only my opinion, I'm going to have to option with number three. We're not, we're not saying we're going to allow containers to be in the city, but it would have to be under our building material. It would be done as a building material now. So, someone could put in a container, because you would, you would have to, in my opinion, you would have to, and what it states as right now is you would have to be used as a building material. So, you would have to either stucco and so forth to allow the, have the container on. I think probably most people in this, in any most communities would hate to sit on their backyard, have a nice barbecue, and looking at this eight, 10-foot-tall storage container sitting in the yard next to them. But that's just, that's my opinion, and I'm only one, I'm only one voice up here.
Well, I'm going to have to agree with you on that. I think more so, I think we have enough trouble controlling this option three that we have going right now without adding more leniency to it because people already don't seem to follow the current code as it is. So, I would not recommend making it any more lenient than it already is, since working on enforcing it the way that it already is already seems to be proving quite difficult.
I've been voicing my opinion on storage containers for a long time. I don't think anybody really wants to hear it, but yes, option C would stand with me as well. I think when you have storage containers in a residential area that are up above the block walls that are already existing, it does block the view of the homeowners, and it also does not give an air. Now, if it was a building with a roof on it and everything that matches, it's a little different than when it's this just giant steel container and, you know, they don't paint them for six months to a year, and they're sitting there and they're red, and they've got graffiti still on them. I'm a little concerned about that, so.
And I don't feel that storage containers belonging in a residential area, I think if they're going to be used, I think that the lot size should be an acre or above. A reason to use them, not in a residential where you have tract homes and small lots. I don't think there's any place for them within a small residential area.
They don't make small storage containers.
I know, that's what I'm saying. That's my point.
I think Scott's going to fire first. I'll sit back and let the first volley come over here.
Let the volley go.
To me, logic would dictate that if you own a larger parcel of property, an acre or more, that typically you have animals and you have a lot of stuff that you should be able to lock up. And a metal storage container is probably the best choice to do that, to protect your property. And as we should have witnessed through this last windstorm that we just had, you can see a lot of plastic storage sheds and wooden storage sheds blown all over town. Now, I didn't see a single storage container that blew over, popped open, or anything. And what really, that I don't understand is, if I'm going to build something out of it, I can have it, but if I'm going to store something in it, I can't have it. That, to me, makes absolutely no sense whatsoever. So, it's really no wonder that everybody's confused as to what is going on and why we're still here two years later.
I think, I think to your comment about building something, the only thing that would be built is you, is the way it stands right now, is you can put a container on there. It would have to be conformed to the existing structure on the property, i.e. stucco. So, if you have a stuccoed house, you're going to have to go out there and stucco the container, and then you're going to have to put some, some sort of roof structure to simulate the property that's already on there.
Which, to me, for a storage unit, makes absolutely no sense, just simply because it's a metal storage building or container, where you can go in there with a wood structure and, you know, if you want to move it or anything like that, with a roof on it, on a container anyway, and if it's stuccoed, it's going to fall off of, it just makes no sense to me. I think that it's an aesthetic issue with most of you as opposed to anything else, so far as function or anything like that.
We're not disregarding the function. We're, I think we're all, we get it. I get it, but I think it's aesthetics, and I think most people that live in a, in a, my belief that live in a city, move to a city, even though we don't like all the rules that are put up before us and we see before us, but they're there for a reason, to beautify and make the city a better, a better city. I was reading today, going through the paperwork again, and I was looking at, which would be the next subject, but RV parking, and I just got a, I just kind of cracked up by one of the cities, that they allow RV parking all over your property. And I thought, well, that's, you know, I don't think that's what people want. I don't think that's what people want when they move to a city, with, you know, someone's eight-by-20, eight-by-40 foot metal container sitting there. But I mean, I'm just one opinion, just like you.
I live right across the street from one. Doesn't bother me in the least. Been there for 20 years.
I agree, you know.
So, I guess it depends on aesthetics, you know?
Well, and I think too, I mean, maybe it's because I'm young and I have young children, but my children cannot have more things than fit into their rooms. If they have so many things, they can't fit them into their rooms, they need to go get rid of them. So, if you want to approach somebody and say, well, you have so much stuff, you can't fit it onto your current property, don't, maybe they should think about how much stuff they're going to buy that they currently can't fit inside their structure before they decide they can't afford to make the structure look like the rest of their residence?
Why would it matter whether or not it's a shipping container to hold it, or a wood structure to hold it, or a plastic storage building? Shouldn't make a bit of difference. If, if you're going to allow storage in an exterior building, what difference does it make whether it's a metal shipping container? Or, in fact, you could realistically go build from scratch a metal building, and nobody's going to say a word because it's not a container. You guys are hung up on this word "container." You don't want it.
Because it's so easy to drag one in and just leave it there.
I could go build the most ugly metal structure in town. Stick build it, and you can't say anything to me about it because it's okay with you.
No, I don't.
Yes, it is, because you don't want a container, but you're not saying a darn thing about a stick build.
No, because we have Section 26.820, and it's related to development appearance and criteria requirements and size allowances of the property.
On certain properties. Depends on when they were built.
No, on the 26.2.8.20, regard to all citizens of Kingman.
Unfortunately, I think we have kind of a divide here between people who like things the way they currently are in Kingman and don't mind them getting to look the way that things currently look, and people who want to make things better and try to clean things up a little bit so that Kingman becomes a little bit of a different place. And so, I think we're going to have a difference of opinion on what we want to do on this allowance, because some people want Kingman to go one direction, and they do care about aesthetics. And while some people might not care about aesthetics, there are a lot of people that do. So, I don't know that there's a good middle ground on the issue. I think we're just going to come up to the fact that there are some people that it doesn't bother, and there are some people that it does.
Yeah, I think Elizabeth stayed that pretty well. I think, though, interesting for me, though, I think I probably still, to say before I fall, probably with Terry, Lori, and Gary in terms of the personal opinion on the subject, but then I still have to flip to the side of trying to listen to the public and public input on it, and we've certainly had probably a little bit, what you're mentioning, Elizabeth, that there's a split. Because we certainly had public opinion, probably a little more in favor of it, truthfully, that had come forward, and it's probably a split issue down the middle. So, the two things that I thought that we had here under the options if we were to move forward in the lettering that Sylvia's put together, that for me, I thought mitigated potentially some of the aesthetics issues that are there, were D and I. D being having some sort of building material on the outside of it that made it match the building. And then I, with the permit being required, which would be an opportunity for a review from staff to make sure that it was meeting the criteria that was proposed above with D. And, you know, that was my comp four. I thought, I'm okay with it. I think it's really good sound from a storage perspective, as long as it matches. And I guess what Scott made me think there, too, there's, on the corner of Franklin and Southern, there's a metal building going up on a lot there for storage of particular things and whatnot. It is a metal building, but I believe they're setting up right now to stucco the outside, I believe, is what's occurring from it. Okay, so, I think, I thought one's going up that particular way, but that.
It is.
You know, so that there was semi the intent of what I, at least my thought perspective for D and I here was to get it to that. Okay, yeah, it's got a nice sound metal structure underneath, but everybody going along, it looks just like the matching surrounding property, and I don't, I think that's where I fall to Scott, with Scott on that one. Ah, okay, well, if it aesthetically, it looks just like the primary building, eh, I don't really have an issue with it. But again, so I think I side with a little bit of what y'all are alluding to personally, but I'm probably still inclined to attempt to find a way to meet some of that public opinion for it, and I think we still can make the place look better. I'm with that. I'm in the group, too, that would love to see us, where we have opportunities to improve the city, we can. But I think we can actually still allow some people some freedom to do this and improve at the same time, if, with the right criteria. But I think we can actually still allow some people some freedom to do this and improve at the same time, if with the right criteria.
Does not option three do what you just described?
Exactly.
Because it's gonna have to go to what our current building development and appearance criteria requirement is just what you stated, what we have. So we're not saying, "No, you can't have it", because I believe you're staying the same thing, that if you wanna go with E being landscaping, such as trees, hedges should be used in combination with exterior appearance criteria mentioned above, along with a permit. I believe option three covers that right now.
Do you not change the current allowance that they can only be used as building materials?
Right, that would be you have to stucco it, because it's the building material underlying the...
It can be used today, if you wanna go use, do it as a building material, et cetera.
Personally, I have a fundamental issue with that. Knowing that I can stick build something, that's not gonna...
Well, I get what you're seeing, and I too drive by where Terry drives by every day, and I'm sure a lot of people that live live on the eastern end of Southern. Louis, not so much he would see it, but when you hit Southern and Franklin, we've been watching the gentleman building a big, probably four, five, six door, fourteen, something fifteen feet tall, structure, and he's put the corrugated metal on the side, he's come along now and see it's being a stuccoed, so, you know, he's he's matching the criteria of his house and for that area going up, so. Because I myself, my wife kept arguing with me, that, "Oh, he's not gonna stucco it", I go, "Just give him time, he's gonna, it'll be stuck going in", that's what's been going on, but I mean, I think the same thing. I think probably most of us up here, it's the aesthetics, appearance, would we want to see that in my, in someone's backyard next to me? Because most of us live on probably ten thousand square foot lots. Majority of the people, I would say, do, or unless I would believe as the lots are.
And they shouldn't be allowed on ten thousand square foot lots? That, to me, is not the argument. The... We originally, I thought, had the concession that these were gonna be on horse-privileged property, twenty thousand square feet or more, and instead of an outright ban.
I think you're right, we did bring that up. But then I thought personally, myself, I'm thinking, okay, so how can we make it fair and allow certain individuals go ahead and put that on their property, and then someone else in the community, because they're not so privileged or foresaw in purchasing something in that area, "I can't have one", and I don't think that's right either to say some can and some can't. I mean, if we all, if, because there's many things that we have building codes on, and someone just can't go and and build whatever they so choose on their property without following building codes.
I may be wrong, I know you asked about that, what's different between option three and two with the others, but I think the statement that I tried and finally found 26.8 in here, I'm not sure that what would be proposed on either one or two that Sylvia has presented to us tonight with the annotated letters is not easier to accomplish than the generic statement under, it's under D, under 26.80, and it specifically says there, other than storage. So right now, the current existing ordinance, if we stay with three, it specifically says you cannot use it for storage. And then the other thing, it says subjects to requirements that are adopted at IBC, which I'm not sure that what we are looking at here is not easier in not having the exact same amount of restrictions that are in the IBC. I can't remember when Keith talked about that before on all the ones there, but it does specifically say right now that it can't be used for storage. So if you leave it alone, or if we elect to not touch it and stick with option three, you couldn't come in and use it as a building material and use it as storage? What the ordinances say.
What option three reads right now is that it can only be used for temporary building material, right? Like if they're building a house.
No, it says it can be repurposed, used as building materials in all zoning districts, for any, for permanent uses other than storage.
There are buildings made out of...
Sir, would you please step up to the podium and please state your name and...
Ron Bear, I live here in this city, thirty-four, forty-four North Apache Street. There are buildings, that's what this one here, the option C, three there, buildings are made out of these building, out of these containers. They cut the sides off, cut the tops off, and they use them as a house. It's a way to save on cost because they already have, they can put three or four of these together, cut off the sides, and they already have it all done. Now they come in and they can put stucco on the outside, make it look like a house, but it's building is the key, it's not storage. It is a real building. She actually had three of them right here on her side show that she presented. There's a pool made out of one of them. That's what they're talking about here on building material. It's part of the house. It is not a container, it's not for storage, and it's not temporary, it's permanent. So that's what they're talking about there on three. That's why what he said about you can't store anything in it is absolutely true. You would never be able to store anything in it other than what's your normal household's goods, because it is that structure, it is your home.
So are you in favor of them as storage units?
No, I'm just telling you that option three, with the argument that you could use that and put stucco on the side of a container and use it in option three, that isn't so. That's not a building material by the IBC. The IBC is very specific on cargo containers. It can be used as a structure for the building, not a storage container. That's why it's in the IBC.
Thank you. State your name again, please.
Ordine Klein, I'm with Mr. McCoy here about this, but why would you stucco it? That's a huge hassle to do. Why wouldn't you just paint it the same color as your home? Wouldn't that solve the problem? And as Mr. McCoy has said to you, they don't blow over, they're great storage deals. If it's personal stuff, it doesn't really matter. A lot of guys use that for building material, you put guns in there, you put... I've seen guys store all kinds of things, there's hunting equipment, there's all kinds of things you can use those big storage sheds for, that are really good. If it matches the same colors as the home, why, wouldn't that suffice you guys? Just out of curiosity, why would you go to all the trouble to stucco that, that's gonna blow off anyway? Gonna give you more problems and it's huge cost. That's one of your cheapest ways, I'm with Mr. McCoy on this one, one of your cheapest ways, and it can be moved. If you wanna move it, you can move it. You put a structure on there that's gonna blow over anyway, look at all the ones that did. You put a permanent structure on there, how are you gonna move it? Just thought I'd bring that point up. Hope that's valid.
Sylvia, may I ask you a question there? I know you and I had spent a lot of a lot of time on this. So as, I guess we never, going through this, never saw... See where was it? Yep. Under, or C of the 26.820.
I think it's D.
Says portable storage containers are expressly prohibited for storage purposes in all residential zoning districts. I thought when we were going over this, we were both under the impression that if we were to let three stand, if that's what we come with, or whatever we come up with, if three is one of the options, that someone could, if they were to stucco it and so forth, could put, use it as a storage.
Yeah, Chairman, the understanding that I have is that it could be used as a building material for an accessory structure. An accessory structures typically can be a detached garage, or, I mean, a building that's over two hundred square feet inside, like if you have a shed that's under two hundred square feet, you don't get a permit, but if it's over, then you're running into the permit process, which could be similar to a shed, right? So then they would have to stucco and put a roof on it by the appearance criteria we have today in all zoning districts. So that's what we have today. I was thinking about some things Commissioner Scott said about the rural, having the larger lots, horse privileges, that's kind of that rural residential area, particularly on the outskirts of town, that might be an area that you would consider initially. The listing that I put for recommending conditions under, say, option one or two are those that can be moved around. They're just there just to start somewhere, and if there's something that could be adjusted that everybody would like better, that's still available.
I think we talked about, I was trying to find it here in the minutes, we talked about actually making it over an acre. If their lot was just over or acre and a half, there was a cutoff point, if anything larger than that, we talked about that we would allow them in our last meeting, and then anything smaller than that acre and a half, they would not be allowed at all. That fits in with that rural area of residential for zoning for, you know, larger lots and horse privileges, which was one of your concerns, I believe, at the time.
I believe it was an acre, but I...
Because there are a lot of one acre lots that are just purely residential homes, like not at all to do with animals or...
I think if you go to option two prior to nineteen eighty-nine, that does cover what Scott is talking about, because those are all on the outline areas.
The problem is the prior to nineteen eighty-nine, that's...
There was a reason why, I know that was brought up limited to, because we have a lot of R140 lots on the eastern end of Southern, a lot of high foothills, so forth, and I don't... I think with prior to nineteen eighty-nine, we're just strictly dealing with people with horses, and it's on the outline areas of the city.
Yep, Chairman, can I clarify again just a little bit more? So this is the map showing the RR, which is all the brown on the outside of the city, and when I did research the lots, the ownership and the sizes, there were some one acre lots included in these RR areas, and then of course you have the undeveloped areas that are much larger, and those were typically annexed into the city later. The R140 that I'm showing prior to nineteen eighty-nine are those that were where subdivisions were platted prior to the modern subdivisions that typically have the CCNRs and one developer building all the homes a certain way and a certain aesthetics. So it includes one small area right here in the center that was platted early on, so there's about the only one that has R140 prior to nineteen eighty-nine besides a couple outskirts that do. Otherwise, I know that's why we were trying to find a way to allow some R140 and not in the newer subdivision areas, basically, because we know they had more appearance criterias that they were trying to keep.
In the newer subdivisions, their storage containers should be covered under the CCNRs and the homeowners associations.
A lot of them don't have CCNRs.
Well, I think that's a problem, that's the problem we got to today, I believe, is because we have citizens of the of the city going by these containers. Their, whether or not they researched the ordinances, they're putting them on their property, and it's come to a head because they've been notified that what they've done is not for ordinances of the city. So that's where we have got to at this point, and why it's come to this.
Chairman, and just to clarify again, the city doesn't address the CCNRs, we're just aware of them. We don't follow through with that, it would be the homeowners association.
And you know, as I know, and I think most people know, CCNRs are as good as the person that's in charge of the development. And most, I'm in one, and it's totally disregarded. And I think that's a problem with all, most of them. They're not properly set up, they're not properly followed through.
And they're not enforceable.
I think if I was gonna be open to anything myself, I think just the definition of horse privileges, because if you're living in a residential area that has horses allowed, aesthetics isn't as, as, you know... Yeah, yeah. Christine, I mean, you got, I lived in horse property over on Sunrise, and, you know, it was, poop was falling all on my yard and everything. I'd rather, personally, that they had a container, that they can shove it all in.
Commissioner Keith, I'd like to clarify that for you a little bit too, and that's kind of why we went with an annexation time period, because there are R140 in all the areas that actually allow for horses, but because of the particular CCNRs in that area, they don't have them, so we went with a timeframe of nineteen eighty-nine prior to try to find the areas that still were having horse privileges.
Yeah, because I think I lived on Sunrise, it was half acre lots, but we had horse privileges there on Sunrise and...
Sounds like R120 maybe, that had an acre still in the lot size.
Yeah, it was grandfathered or whatever.
If we still went with horse privileges, it covers a much broader area than what we have shown tonight.
Checkmate.
Thank you, Sylvia.
You're welcome.
So we need to come up... I don't know if we can hash this out anymore than what we've hashed out. I think we gotta come up with one of the three tonight. I mean, it's been beat up by that horse, we've heard, we've heard from the community. And we've heard some, you know, awesome opinions on both sides. I think we gotta come up with something that's gonna work best the community here.
I have something I'd like to say. Now, on this ordinance that is already in play here, the 26.820 portable storage containers, why do we wanna vary from this? Because this covers all of the issues. And it also states in here too that containers are not allowed in, like, small lots. It has a lot size in here, it applies to open storage containers. I mean, if you've got the space in the property, I don't see why a storage container couldn't be placed on there without the restrictions of it having to match and stuff. It'll fall under the open storage. But I still don't see that we should be opening it up to a residential area where you have a bunch of like track homes, smaller lots, and trying to fit in the storage containers, and then making the mandate that you have to have, like, a stuccoed or have a roof on it. I think that there's no place in a residential district for storage containers. I think they can serve a purpose, and they can serve a purpose, and if you have at least an acre or better for open storage, I just don't feel that we have the need in a small residential lot for a storage container. We have how many storage facilities in Kingman? Why aren't those being utilized? We can utilize the storage facilities that are already available. If you have that much stuff, use those.
So you're saying you're more for option two?
I am saying that I like what is already written, that is already on an ordinance, that it's already been hashed out.
Doesn't it say only commercial?
It says everything, it says things in here about commercial, it says in here...
So you're saying leave as it is?
I'm saying leave it as it is.
Option three.
Just leave it. And if you have forty or an acre or better, and it says it right here, one acre, you know, that you can use a storage container
Well, it's...
as an open lot storage. Why couldn't you do... As an open lot storage. Why couldn't you do that?
I don't think that's correct.
I think your definition of open lot storage just does not include a closed storage container.
Yeah, if you leave it alone, if you leave it alone, everybody would be stuck by C under the existing ones. It says expressly prohibited for any storage purpose in any residential lot.
That's what they're trying to say.
But one, one can use it as a garage, which, as a garage, we all know what we put in a garage.
Put my truck in my garage.
And everything else that, that we, we deem valuable goes in there.
Chairman, I wanted to clarify one more time for Vice Chair Shores. On that lot size that you're reading within this section is specifically to commercial at this point, just to clarify. And really, the only statement we have is that D, you know, saying that portable storage containers may be repurposed and used as building material in all zoning districts, et cetera, but that, that one lot size was for the commercial.
So Sylvia...
Maybe that should be changed.
So option two is one acre minimum, is that right?
Option two is actually one acre, but with areas annexed in prior to 1989.
One acre.
Which is what we talked about at the last...
Yeah.
Right.
Which is kind of what you're saying.
Which that would fall under open lot storage, wouldn't it? If you had one of these containers and you had an acre or better.
No.
It's got to be commercial.
I think.
It has to be commercial.
Now...
Chairman, this section is drafted for commercial, and we're working with it now to include any residential allowances, and so at this point, we just have the allowance that it can be used in any residential district as far as D, but right now, the options I gave you would be worked into this section.
So the one you're reading right now would be modified, one, well, we have two options to modify it, or leave it as it stands right now, 26.820, just leave it as such.
Actually, I think the best thing to do would be to table it, have a work session so everybody's on the same page, and we're not sitting here in the public meeting trying to hash this out, because some of us have different understandings than others.
Sylvia.
And we'll be here all night trying to figure out, well, you believe this, I believe something else. That would be, I think, your best option.
What does the city have in place right now, written for residential?
Okay. Chairman, Commissioner, so in residential, we can use containers as a building material in any zoning district, as long as it meets building code and meets subcurrents criteria.
Correct. For living, to live in.
Just to live in.
Just to live in, correct. You wouldn't be able to use it for storage, is that correct?
You know, we were even discussing that right now, because typically, I mean, people build detached garages, and that's good use for storage, so we were kind of trying to find that line as well.
Okay. And in this case, believe it or not, Scott, I agree with you. We need to table this, we need to separate them out, we need to discuss it as two separate situations. Commercial was already decided on. I don't, I think where we're all getting confused is we're trying to revamp a commercial to fit into a residential area. Residential's residential. So I think we have to make a couple of choices. One, are we going to, what, are we going to allow a size of a lot? Are we going to allow the size of a container? And what are we going to require around it if we do allow a container? And that fits more into the option two, which is what we discussed at the last meeting, but I think we're all kind of getting conflicted as to what was commercial and what's residential. You know, I read through this, and I thought I had it clear in my head, and I was thinking, I'm reading the residential, and then it points out that this is strictly the commercial section, so it kind of throws you off, and I think you ended up in the same boat.
Yeah, yeah, because I was reading it. Because it would fall under open lot storage for a container if you had an acre or better. And it doesn't matter if it's residential or commercial.
I see where that fits into, and where you're coming from with option two, that you're, you're kind of doing, here it is, but let's do this, and then that way, option two actually looks better. But I'm not sure how to break it down so that not only us as a commission, but the community individuals that are all looking at these things, does my home fit this criteria? I think that's what we're trying to get down to, layman's terms on it.
Chairman, I will try to find a way to clarify this for you.
I know, I'm so sorry, Sylvia. I know. The look on your face is priceless.
So we can work on that if you'd like to do that.
Do we need a motion to table this, or?
No, this is a discussion item, so I can bring back more or put a workshop together for you. I can do one of those things.
Do we need to request, like, a workshop where we can discuss this as, as a commission?
Yes, please.
Okay, I would like to make that recommendation, that we get together and have a workshop on this. That way, we can discuss it amongst ourselves.
And not put it all on Sylvia.
Yeah, and then not put it...
It'll be fine, we'll bring cook cases, it'll be good.
So is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Second.
Have a motion, and a motion, and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Right. Workshop, it is, Sylvia.
All right.
All righty. Now we have discussion of the AGA Conference 2018, Flagstaff, Arizona.
Chairman Commissioners, I don't have a PowerPoint for you, it's actually pretty straightforward. We have a planning conference scheduled in November in Flagstaff. I have the rooms reserved, we have registrations in place. Rich and I are going at this point. Chairman Fredrickson and Chairman, Commissioner Keith is going. So we just need one more person to know who's going with us on this trip, and...
Would Scott call?
I've been to many, and I'm not here anyway. I'll be out of town.
That's right, you were going to be out of town, right? Okay.
I'm available.
You have an option if you'd like, do it.
So I can take care of that, that's really it, just needed...
Seven through the ninth of November.
November seventh through the ninth. We just do need to know by October 17th if something does come up and you can't make it, that would be a good time to let us know so we can take care of the paperwork and stuff, but, and then as, as it gets closer to the conference, we can talk about the transportation, who's going with who, but it's pretty much that. It'll be fun, good learning experience. That's all I got on that one.
Thank you, Sylvia.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Sorry, Sylvia.
Yeah.
Item number four, new business, discussion regarding allowing manufactured homes on 5,000 square foot lots. Richard?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. This is the discussion item in front of you this evening. It's a discussion to potentially allow manufactured homes on lots of 5,000 square feet in the RMH zoning district. Currently, the minimum lot size and parcel size in the RMH zoning district is 6,000 square feet. There is an exception to that requirement in that section of the zoning ordinance, which allows single-family detached homes on lots of 5,000 square feet and at least 50 feet wide in areas that were platted prior to 1945. The definition of a single-family detached home does not, however, include manufactured homes, only includes essentially what we call stick-built or site-built type homes. Therefore, a manufactured home would not be included in the exception that allows development on building sites that are less than 6,000 square feet in that district. That ordinance, that exception ordinance was passed back in 1992. It does apply to areas zoned RMH six, which is residential manufactured homes, 6,000 square foot lot minimum, as well as the R162 zoning districts in Kingman. However, there does not appear to be, have been a discussion about extending that, that allowance to manufactured homes at that time back in 1992. Much of the area south of the rail tracks is owned RMH six. This area was subdivided prior to 1945 and contains a variety of lot sizes, including multiple areas that originally were subdivided into 25 by 100-foot lots. We kind of looked through that area, looked at the reverse maps. Appears to be about 40 vacant parcels in that area south of the tracks that are less than 6,000 square feet in size, where there are improved roads, at least water available to the site, in some cases sewer as well. This is just a zoning map showing areas south of Kingman, south of downtown Kingman. All the areas in blue are the areas zoned RMH six. This is a little hard to read, but this map shows all the existing utility lines in that area. The greenish-looking lines are the sewer lines, purple lines are water utility lines, and the yellow circles are manholes. So there is an interest in allowing manufactured homes on lots less than 6,000 feet, square feet in this, in the RMH six district. Currently, there is no exception, I'm sorry, currently, there is no exception to allow development on lots less than 5,000 square feet in any district, except for the exception for tiny homes, which is on lots of 2,500 square feet, and that's only in the R2 district. However, modifying the current language to open up additional areas for manufactured homes would help to infill and redevelop the south side of Kingman. So this is basically a topic for discussion at this point, see which direction you'd like to go, give us direction tonight, and whether you'd like to see a text amendment or not, we could bring additional information to you at a subsequent meeting, or we could initiate a text amendment tonight. With that, I'll open it to any questions you might have.
So manufactured homes is building them off-site and bringing them in?
Correct. These are, these are the manufactured homes that are usually one or two pieces that are set up on-site.
Now, what would, what, since we just had this a couple of meetings ago, what would prevent a tiny home?
Tiny homes currently, well, currently, they would be allowed in RMH six, but as far as being on the smaller lots, less than 5,000 square feet, it would only be applied to the R2 district. That's, that's only where we extended that allowance to. A tiny home could be on a 5,000 square foot lot in this district.
Because we were talking about 25 by 100-foot lots sizes.
They had to have a sewer, and some of these 40 lots don't have the sewer hooked up, right?
That's correct.
That's what I thought.
Rich, I'm assuming the manufactured home definition you're discussing here is something that's larger than a tiny home? Or could?
Yes, tiny home is, is a distinct, is, is, defines distinctly in the ordinance. It's, it's a site-built structure typically, and it's below a certain size. I forget exactly how big, 860?
Yeah, 500 feet or something in height.
Down to 300 square feet?
Yeah.
Okay. But a manufactured home is defined differently in the, in the ordinance.
That's what it is, we're talking. Mobile home. He's talking about mobile homes, correct?
We, we define mobile homes as something prior, that was constructed prior to 1976 and does not meet the, what we'd call the HUD standards for...
Really?
But a manufactured home is something that does meet that standard.
It's a single wide or a double wide?
It could be either. It would be something manufactured to HUD standards 1976 or later.
Okay, well, in real estate, we call them still manufactured, so modular or manufactured? Manufactured, single wide or double wide with, I just was clarifying.
Yeah, they could be either single wide or double wide.
That's right.
A house in a box. Now, on this map that we have here, what is the zone now? Is where, where are you talking? What is the zone that you're planning on putting these manufactured homes on?
Well, currently, so all these areas that are with a light blue designation is the area that's currently zoned RMH six. Just to kind of orient you, excuse me, this is Andy Devine right here, Beal is here, so this is the downtown area. Rail tracks are approximately here, you have Topeka, Park Street, and then generally, south of Park Street is the area that's zoned RMH six.
There's already a lot of manufactured homes in that area, isn't there?
There are, mhm.
Okay. And you're saying you want to reduce the lot size to, what, 25 by 100?
What we're saying is that in this area, most of this area was platted with 25 by 100-foot lots. What, what we would do is, would be to potentially extend that, that exception that's currently given to site-built homes as well as tiny homes to manufactured homes. So they could then be allowed to be constructed on a 5,000 square foot lot or parcel. So you could combine two lots together or have a parcel of billable site that was 5,000 square feet.
What about sewer hookup?
Well, right now, I show, I'll show you the sewer map again. There are scattered areas with sewer, some areas don't have sewer currently. For site-built homes, if you're within 250 feet, I believe, the sewer line, you are required to extend sewer, and that would be the same for a manufactured home, but if you're further away than that, then it's not currently a requirement.
So they'd still be putting in septic through those areas?
Some areas are, are, there are sewer, these are these areas that are in green, so some of the area does have sewer available. And if they're within 250 feet, they'll have to extend the sewer line.
Correct.
But that's not, that's, that's the current standard already.
And gas lines run through there, too? Already natural?
I'm not sure, we're only showing the city utilities on this map.
Okay. So what's, the manufactured homes that are in there now, a lot of them are obviously prior to 1976, I'm assuming?
Some, some are, yes, mhm.
Those are, some of those are under sewer hookup right now, and some of them are septic, is what you're saying?
Correct.
And some of them are still using propane, and some of them are hooked up to gas?
I, yeah, that may be the case. I'm not, not familiar with...
Well, the reason I say that is because I think when you have a condensed area like that, I think where we need to start with some of our criteria before we decide on a home is, what are they hooking into, and what are we using for their application as far as the sewer, the, the gas and the water, you know?
I think basically, they just want to go, go from three lots to two. So if they own two lots, they can put a home on it. Right now, with the 25 by 100 lots, you have to get three, correct?
Well, yeah, or, or two and a half, essentially. And we already, as I said, we already allow, if someone were to build a site-built home, sick-built type home in that area, they could build it on a 5,000 square foot lot, whether or not it was on sewer.
So just...
It's just a matter of whether this is extended from, extended to manufactured homes.
To manufactured homes, I see. Mhm. So either way, if it's a mobile home or a house, if you got a hookup to septic or sewer, is, either way, doesn't matter. If it's a house or a mobile home, you got to either put the sewer in or connect a sewer or a septic. Whether or not it's a manufactured home or a site-built home doesn't really have anything to do with it.
What I was asking was, some of those lots don't have that there, so that's my concern, is are they bringing in propane, or are they putting in a septic that's condensed area for that kind of thing?
Right.
Yeah. But I don't know what, I'm just asking, that's all. There's, is there a difference between the manufactured home, what they're going to have to do versus the site-built home?
Yeah, I think that's a separate issue, Lord, on the septic versus gas hookup irrespective of whether it's manufactured home or site-built or, or tiny.
Right, but what I'm saying is if you're going to bring in a, a mobile home or manufactured home, you got them really close together, and you're, all of a sudden, you've got all these propane tanks backed up. That's my concern, is one goes, they're going to go, and natural gas can do the same thing, I get that, but...
But I think you'd have the same risk, because right now, where we made the tiny home allowance, unless I'm incorrect, could, right now, you could currently wing out tiny homes right and left in there and put them all in propane, and there's nothing, I mean, it's allowed. I think that's, I think that, not that that's a bad issue, but I think that's a separate subject versus the manufactured home.
I think all, all we're really asking is, do we want to open it up to get more infill in that area? in that area?
And I, I don't think it's inconsistent with what's already there in that
Yeah.
area of the, of the community.
It's already zoned that way.
Right.
And I would, I would like to ask Scott, because I know you're, well, no, only for the fact that you're really familiar, I'm not familiar with that, but you're more familiar with that, and I would just ask your opinion on-
Well, I, I'm a proponent of infill, so I absolutely have no problem with it.
I don't either.
And it's already zoned for manufactured homes, so-
I'm okay with it, too, just based on it's consistent with what's there in that, in that community.
So, do we need to have you initiate, I guess, if we so, further text amendment on?
Is that what you-
What, what we need tonight is you need to initiate it?
If you so chose, you can, you can direct us to prepare a text amendment and bring it back to you at the next meeting. And give us some direction, which way you'd like to go, if you just want to extend it to manufactured homes and leave it at that. It's a fairly simple amendment.
That was already a staff recommendation already, correct?
This is, this, we're not recommending anything at this point. We're just bringing it to your attention. But if you want to direct us to bring this back for a, a public, public hearing, we can do that.
First, I'll put this out there, and it's, we're looking at renewal of an area. I'm, my mind goes into the infrastructure all the way up, not just going in and replacing a few homes. It's, it's how is the structure set up? Are the streets still wide enough? Are the sidewalks in place? When you start renewing an area, you, you have to look at what's there and what can be done. I'm not opposed to just doing the same thing that's already there. I'm just saying, if we're going to start doing this, are we going to look at all of it as a big picture and not just what it's already zoned at? I, it's an older part of town that probably needs some underground infrastructure done. That, that's all I'm asking, is, is are we doing this the right way?
Well, there's quite a bit of sewer system in that area. And I think, you know, if we do do this, that, you know, just have them hook up to sewer, you know? And then the city would have to look at, what is the cause to, you know, expand that sewer system in that area, rather than having a, a lot of small lots with a lot of septic systems? Because the smaller the lot you go, and, you know, this is kind of a, an issue, and I know it's not part of the city, but it's kind of an issue out in the Butler area with the, the small lots. And then when the septic system fails, there's no way or where for, for it to be rebuilt. So then the lot becomes condemned, it's non-livable, you know? So I think that's something we do need to look at just a little bit before we, we, we create another area, you know, that could potentially have these issues. So, before we do that rezone, I would like to have that brought up as part of maybe some research and look into it to see, what do we have as far as like, you know, facilities? You know, and how are we going to accommodate this? If we do expand it, I'm all for, you know, expanding it and, you know, and making it, you know, a more economic place, you know, for, for, for human people and, you know, for, to build the community. But I, I think we need to look at it and, you know, also tune in environmental aspect as well.
Well, Commissioner Shores, I certainly could talk to our engineering department and ask them, maybe they could give us some updates on what replacement, what, what they've been doing with the infrastructure in the area. I know they've done some replacements of water lines over the years, sewer lines. Maybe they give us a, a report on what's, what's been done in the area, what will be done in the future, give you some idea of what's happening in that area.
Right. See how we can expand that.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Okay. I guess I don't mean to be a blanket about it, but-
I, I think we're already allowing building going on down there, whether or not they're propane, whether or not they're natural gas, whether or not they're septic. All, all this gentleman is asking is if we can allow manufacturing homes to be built there. So obviously, one or the other is already there. Everything's there. I don't think, personally, I don't think going in and, because I don't think the city's going to go in and update the facilities. So whatever's there, is there.
This, Mr. Chairman, I was just going to say, the city does do upgrades and, you know, improve, improvements to those utility lines from time to time as necessary, and I, I'm sure there's a program for those areas that, as I said, we can provide that information to you if that's something that you'd like to, to see.
Yeah.
So you want it brought back?
I do. With some more information and-
Or get a motion?
I'll make a motion for some information to be brought back, you know, regarding, you know, the facilities in the area, you know, before we start downsizing the lots there. Because I know we made it a requirement for tiny homes when we changed it, that they have to be able to hook up to the sewer system. And, you know, if it's kind of a hit and miss in this area, I think that maybe we need to look at that a little bit further.
I'll second that.
I have a motion. I need a second.
Second that.
I have a motion, and a second's been made. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
All opposed? Thank you, Richard.
So we'll bring this back for further discussion
Please.
at the next meeting in September.
Thank you. Thank you, Rich.
Thanks.
Okay, item number four B, amendment to section twenty-six point eight-three-zero, storage of boat, trailers, campers, et cetera.
Good evening again. This is a text amendment to section twenty-six point eight-three-zero, storage of boats, trailers, and campers. This is a city-initiated text amendment. The request is to modify the conditions under which recreational vehicles, boats, trailers, and campers may be stored residentially, on residentially zoned properties. Staff recommendation is to approve one of the three text amendment options. They'll be before the, this evening. So currently, section twenty-six point eight-three-zero addresses the storage of these types of vehicles on residentially zoned property. The ordinance does the following. It bans the storage of vehicles in required front yards. It limits the number of vehicles to two per twenty thousand square feet, up to a maximum of four on any lot. It requires the storage of the vehicles within a required side or rear yard behind a solid fence wall or a proof planting so that it is screened from view of any adjoining residential areas. At this time, there is no parking ban of RVs or similar vehicles on residential streets. These vehicles can pose a hazard by blocking these driveways and street intersection. Also, within section two, we define the following terms. These are the, the various yards that are defined in the ordinance. Front yard is the portion of the property between the front lot line and the front of the principal building. Frontside yard is the, is on a corner lot between the principal building and the side street. Side yard is the interior side lot line between the front and rear yards. And the rear yard is the area between the rear lot line, the rear of the building and the rear lot line. So all of our residential zoning districts have minimum building setbacks for these yards. So the city council began a discussion in June about possible residential street parking ban, and the council at that discussion session asked that the PNC commission review whether the current ordinance that we have for storage of RVs and similar vehicles on residential lots needed to be modified or updated in order to discourage off-street parking prior to the establishment of a new ordinance. The commission discussed the matter both at your June twelfth and, and July tenth meetings. You did initiate a text amendment at, excuse me, at your last meeting. The commission and the public in attendance discussed the following ideas. One was to no longer require site-destructing, structuring fencing for the storage areas. Another idea that was brought forward is requiring vehicles to be stored behind the front facade of the home. Another idea was requiring or allowing vehicles to be stored in the front yards, provided that they are located on a paved driveway and do not block sidewalks. So as I said, the commission asked us to bring this back for a public hearing. We were tasked with doing further research, and we're asked to bring back three options. So I did four, did research in four Arizona cities as well as one California city in regard to parking and storage of, of RVs, campers, and trailers. Four Arizona cities I looked at with Flagstaff, like Havasu, Prescott, and Prescott Valley, and we also looked at Covina, California. So this table just shows, kind of summarizes the, the ordinances that we looked at. First column is a parking time restriction. In Flagstaff, they allow RVs to be parked for a maximum of five days. It has to be on a driveway or within a ten-foot side yard. As far as storage beyond that five days, it would have to be the side, interior side or rear yard, and there's no screening requirement. In Havasu, there were really no requirements, other than there has to be a house on the property and it's considered accessory to the home. In Prescott, parking was allowed for seventy-two hours in any seven-day period. They required a minimum clearance on three, of three feet on one side of the RV to allow Storage beyond the seventy-two hour period is allowed in the side or rear yard, and the only screening requirement was for trailers that exceeded forty feet in length. In Prescott Valley, it's forty-eight hours in the calendar month is the allowance for parking. Parking can be in a front or front-side yard. Storage beyond the forty-eight hours is within an interior side or rear yard, and there's no screening requirement. In Covina, California, seventy-two hour parking limitation. There, it had to be on a paved driveway or parking area in the front or front-side yard. There's no specific location for storage. However, if it is stored within the front or front-side yard, screening would be requirement, would, would be required. So what we found in, in looking at these five cities is most, they mostly distinguish between shorter-term parking periods and longer-term storage of RVs and similar vehicles. Also, two cities required parked vehicles to be on paved surfacing. And then long-term storage is generally not required to be screened except for the largest vehicles or when it's in an invisible location, such as a front or front-side yard. So we did develop three options for the PNC commission to consider based upon the research as well as the previous discussion. All options include the following modifications. We're modifying the title to the subsection and also the first sentence to just more clearly convey that the section is applicable to RVs, boats, trailers, and campers. We also state that occupation is not permitted on any residential lots. No portions of the vehicles would be allowed to be extended into or block a public sidewalk or street. And the general language mirrors some of the language in the proposed street parking So what I tried to do is graphically represent what each option does, and then I'll go over the actual language of each option. So in option one, it's a modification of our current allowance, and that modification would be that we'll have a seventy-two hour parking allowance on, on, only on paved driveways. There would be no front yard storage or front-side storage permitted. Permanent storage would be allowed would be within a rear yard or side yard with a six-foot-high screen wall fencing or planting around the, the storage areas. And no blocking or extending of sidewalks in the street. So it's, it's essentially a modification of the current ordinance. Option two is the same as option one, except that there is no screening requirement. So beyond the seventy-two hour period of parking on, on the driveways, RVs and other vehicles can be parked in the side yard as long as it's behind the front facade of the house. So in the side yard or rear yard areas, and those areas in green. Then option three would be, would allow permanent storage in the front yard and front-side yard areas, as long as it was on a paved driveway, and would allow storage behind the front facade of the house in the side yards and rear yards on essentially non-paved surfaces, and there would be no screening requirement. So your decision options tonight are to recommend one of the following, one of the three options that I've shown before you, or you can modify those, any of those options if you, if you so choose, or you could recommend no changes to the ordinance. And I can just briefly go over the, the actual language. Like I said, the, this first section here, the title and the first paragraph or sentence is the same in each, each of the three options. And also, one and four concerning living and occupying and the extending and blocking the street, those are the same in all three options. The difference, again, is in option one, there'd be a seventy-two hour time period for, for parking. Beyond that, it would allow storage in the front, would not allow storage in the front or, front yard or the front-side yard. It would have to be in a side yard or a rear yard behind a side-struck fence, landscape feature, or something where it couldn't be seen from beyond the property boundaries. Option two, given me the same as option one, except that there would be no screening requirement, just the requirement that beyond the seventy-two hour period, that the vehicles be, be behind the front facade of the structure in the side or, or rear yard. And option three would allow storage pretty much anywhere except not on a driveway. So you can store it on the driveway or, or parking area in front of your house or your front-side yard, or it could be stored behind the front facade of the house, in the yard itself, no screening requirements. So those are the three options for you this evening. I'll try and answer any questions you may have.
Rich, all of these include no on-street parking, correct?
The on-street parking ordinance is going to be dealt with separately because that's actually within the city code, which is separate from this ordinance. So what we would probably do is, if you were to make a recommendation to the council, we would work with the, the city attorney's office to develop a, an ordinance to deal with the parking on the street. So it wouldn't necessarily have to, we wouldn't necessarily have to have a parking ban, but this, I think, would go some way toward at least allowing people to know what they can do when they park it on, on their property, when they have to take it off the street.
I, I thought, I was under the impression that only above plus, we were trying to eliminate street, on-street parking.
We did bring, I did bring that to your attention at the last meeting. We did discuss that. The reason I didn't bring that to you tonight is because technically, it's not within the Plating Zone Commission's purview to deal with the streets, technically. This was more or less to try to, how we're going to deal with parking on residential lots. And so we would, we, the staff, would work with the attorney's office to develop a, a ordinance to deal with the street parking that would be, be then taken to the council, I think concurrently with this ordinance. It would be similar to what you already looked at.
Well, I don't necessarily, that's not a bad idea, too, at least if you just go, hey, don't park on the street. Okay, well, where are you going to go? So it wouldn't be bad to address the other aspect of it concurrently or at least in advance.
Right.
It'd be horrible if you're the family with three teenagers that all have a driving, driver's license and three cars plus your own.
Any further questions?
I'm going to vent the one out of the house before the other one hits that age.
Okay. That works. Okay. I'm good with that.
Any further questions, Richard? All right, Richard, thank you.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
I'm going to open this up to the public, and I only have one person, one gentleman that signed this request, and I believe his name is Ron?
Bear.
Bear?
Bear.
Ron Bear, thirty-four forty-four North Apache Street, Kingman.
After the last meeting, I went home and did some research for you. Since your commitment was that it's already not allowed within city limits, why is the building department issuing permits for RV parking pads on building lot, on building plans? Because they are the ones responsible to make sure codes are followed. Yet you guys sat here at the last meeting and swore to God, "This is not allowed in the city of Kingman right now, on properties." And I can tell you, there are builders building right now RV pads, because they're on their plan. People are paying for an RV pad, and they're attached to their driveway in the front of the house. So that kind of kiboshes what was said last time we were here, really kiboshes it, because otherwise, they couldn't be doing it. If I was the homeowner that just paid for that lot and that permit, I'd be suing the building department in a heartbeat, if you tell me now, "I can't build there, and I can't have my RV after I just paid for that, specifically for that item." So we're in a grandfathering area. I brought up last time, too, about the fact there is no RV storage. I checked around in town, 100-plus dollars a month for RV storage, and there's only two or three places, and they're full for RV storage already. So who's going to open up a lot to start putting in RVs and boats? I kind of like the idea that he came back and said, "I can park in my driveway." Of course, that means my car will have to go out on the street. But he also failed to mention that on these places that have ordinances about street parking, they have also defined how long the RV has to be. And they're very specific, not the smaller RVs, they're talking the larger ones. And I know for a fact, the city, since our last meeting, has already ticketed people up behind Ace Hardware for parking their RV on the street. And yet you just heard him saying, "It's not a city ordinance already." So what are the cops using to ticket these people? Remember I said about the idea of ticketing me for parking in my front yard, but it's on my driveway? That common sense thing you're going to tell a judge, and he's going to rule in your favor? Now we're in even a grayer area, police are giving tickets out for an ordinance that don't exist, based on these meetings. This was designed because of one incident. In how many years has Kingman been around that we've had another death, other than this one child? I agree, it's heartrending, but you can't legislate that out. We have been a community for a long time without anything but the one death. Are we lucky? Maybe? But it also goes to show that as a community, we work together to help our young children. We don't just make laws that everybody else has to suffer for, to try to protect the people that don't want to do their job as a parent. Thank you.
Any further, any further comments from the public? Please state your name.
Yeah, my name's Gary Sim, and I'm a resident here. And I think we're going to put in the cart and throw the horse here, talking about parking on our lots, and we're having to figure out what we're doing on the street, in my opinion. You know, you can park here, you can't park here, but you can park in front of your street, on the street, right now. That doesn't make sense to me. If I can't park in my driveway more than 72 hours, why am I, why can't I park on the street for more than 72 hours? To me, it doesn't make sense. Now, there's neighborhoods in this city where we have, we've talked about CCNRs. And they say that you can't park here, you can't park this, you can't do that. And I think you should abide by your CCNRs, but there's a lot of places here in this town that don't have them. So why should we tell somebody that he can't park his car in his RV or whatever in his front yard, when there's no rule against it, as of right now, in my opinion? That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any further comments from the... Please state your name.
Rick Hamilton. I live in Rancho Santa Fe. First time I've ever done anything like this. I moved to Kingman six years ago to finish my career and start a retirement. The appeal of Kingman was a city within, it's like a small city living. Everybody's friendly, everybody's polite. I bought a property that is three-quarters of an acre. The wash is my backyard. Everything else is front yard. You're telling me I'm not going to be able to put my RV in my front yard? How is that possible, that I cannot park my personal property on the lot that I own? That's my question to you.
Thank you. Any further questions from the public? Comments, I should say? State your name, please.
My name is Daniel Shelby. I live across the street from Ron here. And I agree with the last two minutes, our, like, our property, I have a boat, it won't fit in my backyard, because I have a block wall. My side yards are too narrow to get it, my boat, to the backyard. So where am I going to park my boat? You guys limit where I can park it on the front. And then, we don't even know where we're going with the street yet. So I think, the other gentleman you said we're putting in the cart for the horses, I think we need to look at what you're going to do with the streets before we can make a decision on what you're going to do on people's property. And that's all I have to say.
Any further questions? All right, closed from the public. I don't want them for discussion.
I'd like to start this off. Okay, I think we have two separate issues here, as far as like parking RVs in the street and parking RVs on the property. I think they're two separate issues, because parking in the street is a public access. I don't think that you should be parking on a street with an RV for living purposes, or parking semis, or work trailers, and things like, you know, because a lot of the communities, our streets are small, they don't actually meet the requirements of a legal street. And I don't feel that street parking is for like RVs or boats and things like that. So I think that's one issue. And then I think the other issue is parking on your property. I don't see a problem with parking your RV, boat, you know, trailer, whatever, on your own property, as long as it's like a designated area. Now, you have, you know, if it's like in front of your house, in your grassed yard, you know, no, I don't, I don't think that's a good situation. But I think if you're parking your RV boat or whatever, and if it's a designated area on your property, whether it be rocks, or pavement, or something, and you have like a U-shaped driveway, I don't foresee a problem with parking, you know, your own personal property on your own lot. And, you know, I'm just putting it out there, you know, I don't want to go so far that we become a, what you call a policing community, you know? Everybody has vehicles and stuff like that, and I think if you park it on your property, I don't think it should be obstructing, you know, like a view. Like, if you're on a corner, I don't think you should be parking a big fifth wheel or something there, where it's obstructing the view and causing, you know, a traffic hazard. And as far as parking on the street, so we'll go back to option one, parking on the street with an RV, people living in it, and taping down electrical cords into their house, I object to that 100%. And it is a safety hazard, and I have seen that several times, several areas in Kingman. And if you're on a small street, small houses, they're small tract homes, and you've got all these vehicles there, it is a safety hazard. It's a safety hazard, whether you're driving a car, walking down the street, or even on the sidewalk. Because if you're walking on the sidewalk, and people are taping down electrical cords, that's a trip and fall thing. And if it's not being enforced, you know, I mean, who's going to assume that responsibility? So I think we need to divide this out just a little bit. That's my opinion.
I agree. I don't think anybody's ever really set out to prevent people from parking their boats or their SUVs, or their, you know, anything else in their, on their property. I think what this all started out, correct me if I'm wrong, Vicky, but wasn't it brought to council's attention that they were looking to get the parking on the streets under control?
Yes, that's correct.
And I think what the gentleman was mentioning, there was an incident, you know, where a child, you know, was, you know, unfortunately, you know, it was, it was a fatal accident, an unfortunate accident, you know? And you are going to have these people that are going to, I don't care how many rules, ordinances that you have in place, you are always going to have those people that are going to abuse those ordinances, you know? And I think that in that situation, that, that's the case. You know, I think it's kind of an isolated incident, but I do feel that we should take RV parking and living in RVs off city streets.
I think this incident just brought to light some of the problems that we're, we have narrow streets in a lot of the core city area. A lot of towns, and I did a little bit of research on this, too, there are a lot of smaller, older towns that have the narrower streets, that actually, after 10:00 PM, you can't park on the street at all. It doesn't matter if it's a car, an RV, or whatever, you can park there all day long, but it's, by 10:00 PM, they have to be off the streets. And a lot of that is for fire trucks, emergency vehicles, to try to get, to navigate the streets at night. You don't, I didn't see a lot of restrictions for parking in their driveways or on their side yards, as long as it did not, one of them actually, the tongue of your trailer could not be on the, block the public sidewalk, or the public right-of-way. And a lot of that is if you've got little kids on bikes, and you don't want them to hit that either, when they're looking back at their friend chasing them. So either, you know, I think those are little ordinances that I think are a safety issue, but I don't think anybody was trying to stop them from parking in driveways, or... I didn't get that at all from where council was going with the request.
No, that, that was not the comments made at the council meeting.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah. I didn't gather that either.
So what direction do you think we should go?
I like option three.
I know, I, I personally went and talked with the city attorney about, because people, and I listened to them all, they're concerned about us telling what the city can tell you what to do with your property. And he brought to my point, we already do that with building requirements, everything, you know, how your house got there. So it's, it's not very uncommon for a city to say, "Yeah, now you can park an RV there or not," because that was, that was my concern, I'll be going down a slippery slope, and he says, "No, the law's already in the city's favors, that they can tell you what you can park, or build, or do such, you know, on your lot." So whether, whether we go with one of these three options here tonight, you know, will be determined, but it is, a city can tell people, whether we like it or not, what can be parked, and what put and left on someone's property. Because that was, that was my main concern, and I just wanted to make sure we weren't going down that slippery slope.
Yeah, I think when I started out, I was more on, honestly, I was more, prior to the last meeting, towards option one, honestly, I was. But listening to public comment last period, I'm like, huh, yeah, should try to take that into consideration, move a little more that way. So I was moving more towards two, or more public comment again tonight, that I think has me more towards where Terry's at on the particular one, which is option three. And I also tried the last month, between our last meeting and this one, to kind of look at some of the different areas of the city, where I don't ordinarily, on a day-to-day basis, go to look at. And I, there's quite a few examples of boats, RVs, trailers, case maybe recreational items, that are parked in driveways, and I, I don't see as much of an issue. I know the one specific one I was thinking of up that led me to that first initial one, that one's been moved now, and I don't, yeah, I, I'm with, I think it was more around what Vicky mentioned there, was about the street issue. I still maintain my opinion on the street issue, I'd like to not see it from a street basis, but as far as parking, other different options in three, without time requirements, I'm fine with that.
I think we're all, we were all misled to believe that's what we were striving for when this came before us, that we were going to come up with an RV code for streets. But now, as Richard stated tonight, that's going to be handled on a different, different level, so we're just looking at properties.
I think it falls under a different ordinance, as to who's going to be policing.
Is there a motion on any one of these?
Yeah, I don't mind making a motion that we direct staff to proceed with option three.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion, and a second's been made. Is there any further discussion? Have a roll call vote, please.
Yes. Mr. DeBries?
Option three.
Chair Fredrickson?
Option three.
Mr. Boss?
Option three.
Mr. Hunsick, or option three?
Trace, pour for four.
Option four.
Option four.
Yes, okay. Option three.
Mr. McCoy?
Option three.
Great. Mr. Shores?
Option three.
Thank you very much. What she carries, you love her.
All righty, new business, item C, discussion of joint commission meeting.
All right. So on July 24th, we had a joint commission meeting, and it was held with representatives from planning and zoning, clean city, historic preservation and parks. The main purpose of the meeting was to share common interests and concerns related to the city of Kingman, and see how, as a group, probably tackle them together. The initiation of this meeting came from when we held one of those, or attended one of the Main Street meetings downtown a few months back. And it was apparent that there was common interest among the different commissions. I'll pause. Okay, so then, some of the common goals that were shared among the commissions, which we found at this joint commission, was the creation of a historical overlay district, and the update of the zoning ordinance, which we've talked about before. By the end of this meeting, we were asked, staff was asked to prepare a map to assist with some cleaning up areas of the city of Kingman. However, we were going to follow through with that, but one of the things that we believe as staff is that we still need to move forward with zoning ordinance update and historic overlay district creation. So with that, I'm working with my boss, Gary Kellogg, because we're going to start seeking out contract agencies. I don't have a timeframe at this moment, but that would probably be the best first step for us as a group to do, to tackle some of the common concerns. We don't have another meeting scheduled at this point, but I will keep you updated on that. And if you have any questions, I, Gary, Chairman Gary was there, and Mr. McCoy was there also. They might have a few words they'd like to share.
I want to, I want to thank Mr. McCoy coming, number one, and I want to thank the other two commissions that were there. Unfortunately, I thought we were going to have more than what we did. I think we, I think we steered off maybe where I was hoping we were going to go, but it was a good result, what we got. I like that we're, I think with Mr. McCoy's advice, that the south side of town, the old part always gets neglected, or they always feel that they're last one served. And with this clean commission, we're looking at, I'm thinking October, possibly sometime of doing a cleanup effort on possibly a couple blocks down there. So, and hopefully, we can get the word out to the city, to get a lot of participation, enthusiasm, and plus the residents down there themselves would probably be on board and seeing, hopefully, a nicer and brighter and future area down there for them that they can be proud of. they can be proud of.
I think so. With Route 66 being the main thoroughfare through town and Topeka Street parallels, it just is common sense that you want to clean up Topeka because that's, everybody's seeing it, so. And then along with Route 66 coming through, clean that area up. With planning and zoning and historic commission, historic preservation and some of the Clean City Commission, we can all work together to kind of spruce up the whole community, actually.
That's good. I have a question. So it's limited to, to from this commission to join the other commissions, or?
Let's, let's have a check, is that correct?
Is that...
Last one was... I didn't send a future meeting, so I don't know.
Is that because of the open law meeting?
We just wanted to keep it to the number of people.
I just needed to clarify, that's all.
We can rotate other people in if, if we have future meetings, but I, I, I think we were, and maybe this could be under announcements by commission members, but I think we were hoping to look at what can be approved upon in downtown, what can be and whatnot and, you know, so, so forth. I think one of the, one of the ideas was put forth is looking at putting park benches downtown.
Commissioner Bridge, some of the, one of the things that we're going to do, be doing is evaluating both Route 66 and Beale Street for, you know, what I would call low-hanging fruit, and that is an update or replacement of the garbage cans and more strategic benches, that, those are the low ones. And then, I think the other thing with the cleanup was, is to develop a way to approach the cleanup with the city that was trying, not trying to eat the whole elephant at one time, and that is, I know that Sylvia and Rich and then Bill Schilling have worked on maps now where you can divide these areas up, and, you know, we can show progress in that area and concentrate it and stuff, so. I mean, those are, those are certainly small steps to certainly improving, you know, the things in the downtown area. Then with looking at future plans of what do we do on streets, starting to think about what's the next step to make it look nice. We've always talked about, but never have done anything with bump outs, you know, both traffic and things like that. And now with the advent of the arch, we have the first bump out, so to speak. Where, where can we begin to take that? But again, trying to do it one step at a time, and then also the budgetary constraints and stuff. Probably one of the most important things really is, as you said, Chairman, that is what we're going to do with the, with the P and Z update, because, you know, after 47 years, we really, we really have to make that work, and, and so get the RFP in place this year, get all the funding in place next year so we can ground running.
Yep, I, I agree. That was, when Sylvia stated the facts to me on how long our ordinances have been updated, I was flabbergasted, and so I'm, I'm all on board, and I know probably most of us members up here are on board, but because that's all we've been doing up here for my three years is amending and, and trying to repair, you know, the ordinances instead of be able to have up-to-date ordinances before us, and it would solve a lot of these issues.
Well, the secret thing will be is, is once we update, then get on some kind of a two-year cycle so we don't ever drop behind again, ever, never let it go. Forty years is a long time.
Yes, I agree.
Got that?
Thank you, Sylvia.
All right, thank you.
All right, item number five, announcements by commission members, limited to announcements, availability, or attendance at conferences and seminars, requests for agenda items for future meetings, and requests for reports from staff. No discussion on any of these items.
I, I have something I would like to say. The arch downtown, you know, it's, I think the arch is, is very nice. I thought it was, you know, it looks nice, except for one thing, and how it's placed on the roadway. Do you know that there's no reflections on that bottom brace?
That's lovely.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There is no, and the only reason why I'm saying this is because I drive a little small car, and, you know, the, the lanes there, they're not marked clearly, it's a little bit confusing on how the striping is in that area. And I'm just zinging along, you know, and I'm looking at the arch. Well, I did not see that there is that base at the bottom. There's no reflection or no deterrent to let people know when they're coming upon that, that there is something that large in the roadway. I didn't hit it or anything, but I'm just like, whoa.
I almost did, I almost did. It goes like two lanes, and you're like going...
I just listened.
It was close, you know, so I think that maybe we need to address that as far as a safety issue and put some, something that's reflective up there or something where a car can't bear.
Commissioner Shores, I'm sorry, but since it's not on the agenda, we can't...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I apologize. It's a good discussion and one that should be had.
Okay, I'll put it on the agenda for next time.
Okay, thank you.
I always forget that, too. In the private sector, we would discuss it, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So can we add that?
Any other, any other comments? May I have a motion for an adjournment?
I'll give you a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'm sorry, Sandy.